I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number 116, 2017, approving and accepting the City of Scranton Capitol Budget for the year 2018 pursuant to Section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter.
We have a sign-in sheet this evening. So far, we have two names on the sheet. Marie Schumacher.
Yes, I am here to speak on the property at Linden and Wyoming. Taking a property, a property with a land assessment of $60,000 off the tax rules will further shrink our tax base. It appears this out-of-the-blue item may be a way of settling the breach of contracts lawsuit against the city filed by the owner after purchasing the property for $595,000, spending about $70,000 on the environmental remediation of the property, and...
Mrs. Schumacher, I don't want to interrupt you. I'm sorry, but it was hard for you to hear. The microphone just needs to be a little closer. I'm sorry.
I didn't even know they were on. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So where was I? Let's see. Okay. Yeah, and per the lawsuit, looking forward to spending several hundred thousand dollars to complete the environmental remediation. As I found nothing in the lawsuit to dispute the remediation estimation completion, I truly don't believe we taxpayers should have to take on such a hefty environmental liability. That the lawsuit is scheduled for certificate of readiness for trial on October 25th of 2017, and the appearance of this property in the Capitol Budget and on tonight's agenda for approval to execute the deed is more than mere coincidence. Back in 2008, the president of Weichert Realty, Hibble &amp; Associates, noted, "There's a lot of people that want to live downtown, and there's nothing available. The success that our local investors and others have experienced here is being communicated well and attracting more investors," said Austin Burke, President of the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce. "There are other outside investors currently looking at the projects in the city as well." "You can't get a deal anywhere in downtown," Mr. Hibble said. "I've never seen this much energy and this much excitement focused on downtown." As recently as late last December, the county in Scranton was awarded a $500,000 federal grant to inventory and conduct environmental assessments on dormant brownfield sites. Mr. Kelly of the county's Economic Development Department said he intended to use remediation plans to get more funding from the EPA to solve the contamination problems at the sites. The property in question was selected as one of the first two, first of two properties for the first phase of the assessment. Brenda Sacco, at that time, who was deputy director of the Operations and Finance for the Lackawanna County Department of Planning and Economic Development, had this to say about the property. "That's a prime location. If you look at Penn Avenue now, you have all those restaurants that are moving in. It shows that people are moving back from just the central location of the Courthouse In conclusion, we should not be buying this property. I don't know if you've vetted it, if you've talked to DEP on the validation of what needs to be done at that site yet, but we should not be buying this property for a green space one block away from the one square block of County Courthouse building and green space and taking it off the tax rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Hoda-Wanitz?
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton. I want to talk about the same issue, and I'll start off by saying I am thoroughly confused. The Capitol Budget refers to land acquisition for green space on the corner of Linden Street and Wyoming Avenue for a figure of $450,000. Is that correct?
That's how it's listed, yes.
Okay. Does that have anything to do with tonight's Agenda 5D, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute the deed conveying title from RSM Properties, LLC, the property located at 248-256 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, PA, to the City of Scranton as more fully described in Exhibit A attached, hereto and made a part hereof, and the figure for that is $375,000. So is this the same property?
Yeah, this is your comment period, Mrs. Hoda-Wanitz.
Okay. If this is the same property, you need to step back and reconcile these two issues. How can you have a Capitol Budget where you're acquiring it for $450,000, and then a separate ordinance you're starting tonight where you're transferring the deed for $375,000? I'm thoroughly confused. If it is indeed the same property, and I believe it is, I don't think you should be moving forward until you can answer those questions. And I agree with Marie. We need more green space a block away from County Courthouse like we need a hole in the head. Before you spend a penny on downtown green space, look at the higher priorities that the city has. Signage for one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no one else, I'll adjourn this public hearing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Also, happy Rosh Hashanah for those who are celebrating the New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. An executive session was held this evening to discuss a matter of litigation. Dispense with reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, Tax Assessors' Reports. Four hearing dates to be held, October 11, October 12, and October 18, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3B, Controllers' Report for Month Ending August 31, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3C, Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held August 16, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3D, Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting Held August 16, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3E, Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting Held August 16, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3F, Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held September 20, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have two. The first, the North Scranton Neighborhood Association Watch is having their annual fundraiser, which is going to benefit the community throughout the year. It's called Oktoberfest. It will be held October 7 from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Polish Club at 1817 Brick Avenue. Tickets are $15. It includes food, drink, drinks and entertainment. It will be basket raffles and 50/50. Also, donations are still currently being collected for Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma relief. All Scranton firehouses throughout the city will be accepting non-perishable goods to help with relief efforts for victims of Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma. For more information, you can call 570-348-4132. Thank you.
Yes, I have one announcement. The Scranton Police Department is going to be fighting for, fighting for a cure, hosting their spaghetti dinner at Frittelli's Restaurant. It's going to be running October 8 through October 22, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. Tickets are on sale now. They're $12 apiece. You can dine in, you can take out. Tickets are available at Police Headquarters or by calling 348-4139 or 558-8301. And all the proceeds, of course, go to the American Cancer Society.
Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz?
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton taxpayer and resident. Item 3E V was the August Controllers' Report. Now, I've been looking at these reports month after month for some time, and this one was startling in the sense that the general fund revenue report shows that to the end of August, from January 1st to August 31st, expenditures exceeded revenues by more than $21 million. Now, normally, you would see revenues exceeding expenditures because the invoices tend to come in late. But why would revenues lag expenditures by $21 million? Now, I know we're not supposed to ask questions, or we're supposed to put them in writing, but you might want to contemplate that statistic. It begs the question. Okay? Item 5D on tonight's agenda. I sat in the caucus in the back room and listened to Mr. Bolzoni's explanations of the Capitol Budget and this Item 5D, and it was clear that I was not privy to previous conversations, especially with regard to RSM's lawsuit against the city. But I think it would be in the best interest of the city if someone could reconcile the $450,000, not 400, $450,000 expenditure in the Capitol Budget for this property on Wyoming Avenue for green space, and Item 5D, which transfers the deed for $375,000, and with that, explain the status of RSM's lawsuit, and what is the county doing applying for a grant, and how are they a player in all of this action? Sometimes I feel like, you know, the public really doesn't have a need to know. You know, we should just sit down and be quiet and not make waves. And if we see things that, you know, get our interest or raise some questions, you know, well, submit your questions in writing or submit a write-to-know. But I'm getting kind of tired of that. And I know you probably don't have the answers because I'm just saying this right now. But again, before you start passing the Capitol Budget and passing 5D, I think the public has a need to know this. This is our money too, and this is our city too. With regard to Item 7E, I was thoroughly lost with Mr. Bolzoni's explanation of why it was a good thing to refinance the four refuse packers at a higher, higher interest rate, where we would pay $47,787 extra each year for a six-year period that comes to $286,725. He had an explanation. I couldn't follow his logic. I would like to hear someone else explain that. Something about it's a good thing to extend the lease another three years. I don't know. Again, that's our money. And Item 5...
Ms. Hoda-Wanitz, I don't want to take up any of your time. If we can hold your time, just on the quick explanation just from when I got out of the caucus, is extending the current lease that we had locked us in in a rate that he still deemed favorable, although a little bit higher than what we were paying before. And he anticipated if we had to start a new lease to get the, to get the equipment either next year or down the road, that interest rate was going to be much higher than the current rate is now. So he felt, you know, based on his expertise, that it was better to refinance now at a slightly higher rate than wait and start a new lease, and the terms would have been definitely higher than what we got refinanced for. That was what I got out of it in a nutshell.
And I'll comment on it under, when the vote comes up as well.
With regard to Item 5E, the $75,000 grant for, to develop a Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction Plan, is this based on the Arcadis study? And if so, when will that study be released to the public? It's been in the mill for several months, and I'm hoping to see it before Election Day, which by the way, is 47 days from today. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Ferrantis?
I want to speak about Courtwright's Stormwater Fee. This fee that will be created because of the backroom deals with the mayor and the lawyers, Pennsylvania American Water and the Sewer Authority. This fee, no one in the city, the taxpayers, the citizens, they don't have a clue what this fee is going to be. There's a study, but it hasn't been complete, and from what I understand, it won't be released until after the election. So this fee will be added to the person's already electric bill, water bill, sewer bill. It, it, it just might be the straw that breaks the camel's back as far as what taxpayers have to pay. Because the citizens of the city have to pick up the stormwater management because the mayor didn't let, didn't make sure that Pennsylvania American Water took over the stormwater management. So now the city is responsible, which is us, the ratepayers, the taxpayers. So as I say, this may be the straw that breaks the camel's back, and I don't believe that Mayor Courtwright cares at all about the taxpayers' backs, considering he's riding around in a 2017 $45,000 new Dodge Durango that we, the taxpayers, are paying for.
Lee Morgan?
Lee Morgan, not that it matters that much. You know, I thought I'd come to the podium today and say that the last time I was here, I had an opportunity where I brought up my opinion that a team of pro se litigators should come together and begin to pursue something in court in regards to the city, because no attorney would probably step into that mess. And some of the most gifted attorneys never went to law school. Now, the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority, the Scranton Times has been running numerous articles on it. I read the article the other day where it's all illegal. So, I mean, Mr. Wexler, you introduced it, and the council acted on it and broke the law. What the Scranton Times is saying is, is true. The other thing that's troubling is if the PUC agreed, if any of those PUC judges agreed to the sale, it's very troubling. It's illegal. Okay? Movement of the money outside the Sewer Authority was illegal. Now, payment to the attorneys on the sale of the authority, illegal. I just don't know why somebody doesn't go to the, to Pennsylvania Supreme Court or whoever holds attorneys responsible and strip them of their law license, because I don't think lawyers can use their license to commit a crime. And they did. So I mean, when you look at this whole circle and you wonder, where's the Auditor General? Where's the Attorney General? Where are they? There's a crime that's been committed here against the people. I think the only thing that's going to bring them out into the daylight is if a group of people go into court and file a petition, because I don't see how this petition can fail. But then, the whole political system's in hot water, because where were they all that had a responsibility to protect the public trust and assets? Because the Sewer Authority wasn't created to bail the city out, was created for something much different. And as far as the stormwater collection system, that's a troubling thing, because that may cost hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. And they were balanced together. That's why they were combined. The Scranton Sewer Authority had both obligations. And you know, when you look at the Scranton Sewer Authority, was it politics that made it fail over an extended period in time by not meeting obligations that the federal government mandated? Was it a political problem? That's troubling. The whole thing is very troubling. And I think the two mayoral candidates, the two major mayoral candidates, Mr. Mulligan, Mr. Courtwright, I don't know what their plan is. I don't like what's taken place so far. And I don't see any way for the city to turn itself around, because really, what needed to be done a long time ago wasn't bringing the, you know, the distressed status on the city, Act 47. That wasn't the answer. Leadership was required. Cutting the city budget was required. Now, a former council president, I asked him to cut the budget by 30 percent. That's a minimum necessary to start to bring the city back into some kind of financial stability. But none of you understand it. You are clamoring for a reassessment. If there's a reassessment in Scranton, there was a lady in the newspaper trying to sell her house recently for $49,000. There's a house on East Mountain for $54,000. There's houses that have sold in this city for $20,000 that you can move into. Does that tell you anything? That means if there's a reassessment in this city, all the tax rates inside the boundaries of the City of Scranton should be cut. But it won't politically happen, because the elected leaders in this community want the last drop of blood that you can pull out of every resident. It's just pathetic. It's beyond pathetic, really, it is. And I really, in my heart of hearts, think it's time for the residents to sign a mass petition and pick two or three pro se litigators and go into court and fight it out and see what happens. And you know what the residents of this city need to do? They need to get a backbone, something they haven't had for a long time. Thank you.
Glennis Johns?
Glennis Johns, North Scranton. I just wanted to bring a couple points that have been on my mind over the past few weeks. So with everything that's happening in the country that trickles down to the local level, I was wondering what happens with DACA and the Dreamers that actually live here in the city, and some of the people who might be undocumented that do a lot, particularly of students that are around my age. What is the city's plan to protect these people, or will this not be a place of sanctuary? Or, I'm just curious, because I haven't heard anything on the local level. Another question that I had has to do with, like I spoke with Mr. Wayne Evans before, I'm particularly interested in the history of Scranton, Pennsylvania, particularly when it comes to people of color. So I want to do more to bring representation to the people who have helped build the city, and maybe talk about walking tours or putting up placards for people to be remembered. Particularly George W. Brown was a huge figure in the city, who had one of the biggest businesses in the area, northeastern Pennsylvania, and he did a lot for the city. He did a lot for people of color here. He did a lot for the businesses, schools, education, and all of those things. So I would like to see more representation happen, and I would like to give you guys a proposal by the end of the month, like with my ideas and how we can make that happen, because I think, kind of like what you touched on, citizens here, their voices aren't really being, their voices aren't really being heard, or they're being forgotten. And I think, like I said, particularly when it comes to people of color, our voices aren't being heard, and we also don't have representation. So I kind of want to make that my mission from here on out. And I'm going to keep it short. I don't have as many powerful words to say as some of the people that were up here before me. But like I said, those are the things that I would like to give to you guys before the end of the month, and see if there's anything that we can work on from there.
Thank you. We look, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Ron Elman?
Last, this past week, six or eight people asked me what the hell I was talking about last week when I said a dollar was gone forever. Real quick, I said three men rented a room for $15, five hours apiece. I got arguments about this. The clerk said the room was a $10 room because it had two beds. She took $5, went to the room, gave each man a dollar. That made the room cost $4 apiece, which is $12. She has $2. There's a dollar missing. Just like I said, that dollar is gone. It's just not there. There's no way to account for it. You multiply it by the millions that have gone through the people's hands, the government's hands in this city since I bought my house. Since I bought my house, listen to this. The golf course, I know people, a lot of people don't know we had a golf course at one time. What happened to the money? I don't know what golf course. The airport, very few people knew that we owned an airport. I didn't for a long time. I never heard any talk about it. Nobody knows about the airport. The South Side Complex, wow, this, that, all kinds of nonsense. Nothing ever happened about that. The parking garage, well, who wants a dirty, greasy, nasty parking garage, so we'll just give it away? The Parking Authority, when that nonprofit leaves here, and I said, "When?", because they're not going to stay long, the city will be left holding the bag for all these millions of dollars, like the $4 million that went to the mall. That's, it's gone. People go say, "Where is it?" It's gone, just like that dollar bill. And there's not much sense in talking about the sewer deal. It's better known as the Unscrupulous Greedy Attorney Enhancement Program. And my favorite one, the $3 million you gave to this greedy base institution instead of the firehouse repairs. Has anyone dictated what to do next? You know, sell a fire truck or something? What are we supposed to do about the firehouses? It's been in the paper over a year ago, they needed repairs. Now, that's, I'd rather have one firehouse than a thousand Lackawanna colleges and their students. They don't contribute nothing. Well, that brings me down to, I just couldn't believe this last week, this unbelievable stupidity of evicting the museum. I don't, that must be one of Amosel's ideas or something, because he don't care about the city. But I was, I was thinking, maybe Mayor Bill is a southern sympathizer, doesn't want anyone to know about it, but I've never seen... to know about it, but I've never seen him at any of our anti-army of the republic protest meetings. Then somebody told me, maybe he's a closet southern sympathizer and just embarrassed to let people know. Whatever. People, we need, we have to get an incredible government in here. I can't imagine Mr. McGowan or anyone wanting to take on all these problems that are here now and that are coming. All I can say is God bless them. Thank you.
Marie Schumacher. The first item is 5D on the agenda. Until we have much more explanation of what's going on with this property, I think that that should be tabled. And I would look forward to some transparency on this whole issue. I just don't know what's happened. All I know is we are being kept in the dark. The county's going after money. We're not doing what we're supposed to do, and now, apparently, perhaps, the company that bought it and spent $670,000 on it is willing to settle for a lot less, just to get out of Dodge? I don't know. I don't feel good, especially with that remediation. The county is, looks like, as we're looking toward the county to get that money from the environmental group, there's no guarantee there. They've got 22 properties on the list. So we're going to be stuck with a property that needs remediation? I don't think we need that, gentlemen. And I hope you vote to table 5D tonight. Two, you probably saw in today's paper that the county commissioners set their five informational meetings on reassessment yesterday. They were in this morning's paper, because I know nobody's at the meeting. What I would like to know is, is anybody, and well, and the times and places are, they've obviously learned from the grandmasters on when they have meetings, because they're all at most inconvenient times and not necessarily places. But is a member of this council going to be at everyone to state a position? Have you even discussed whether or not?
Yeah, I don't plan on going to everyone, no.
Pardon?
I do not plan on going to everyone.
Well, I didn't say one person should, but have they been spread out so that somebody from the city of Scranton that represents the council will be at every meeting?
We, I'm not sure we're going to do it as a council. We can, if we discuss it and we come up upon a position that we want to express as a council. Probably very similar to what we did with our opposition to the landfill. I'm not sure if we're going to do it as a body, all the individual councilmen are.
Well, I would suggest we get together and get some statistics together to show what we need, and I'm willing to share my data with anybody who.
My opinion is, the reason why it's happening is because council pushed them to do it. That's what, that's my opinion, that the reassessment is happening because of what was.
Well, I don't think it belongs on the ballot, but that's, now, on to number three, is also, I guess, Mr. Wexler, I had, you had spoken at the last meeting in July, July before the August recess, about a parking meeting, and that you thought it would happen in September. When I emailed you during the recess, you said September. September, we're running out of days, so has that been set?
No, it has, it has not been, but we have been in contact with NDC and NBM to have the next meeting here in Scranton.
And that, is that on the schedule?
No, it's not. There is no, there is no schedule of meetings for that.
They just pop up?
Yep. Just like any private business, they can schedule them at their own time.
The surrenti, the dollars, the dollars that we are paying in insurance on that property, does anybody have that yet? Have we paid the bill? Do we have the Knowles list?
We both, I know Council Wexler and myself both asked for that, I don't know, did you get it back?
No, I did not. I know Mr. Bolson.
We both asked for it, so we're waiting.
I'm sorry.
We both simultaneously, simultaneously asked for that list last week, so we didn't get it back yet. But he promised to get us, we saw an email chain that he sent to Knowles to get the information.
Okay, and I guess I would personally like to ask, we are the only municipality in this entire county that has separate tax mileage on land and improvements. I would ask that we, you, ask that the budget be, the property taxes be based on the total, just as every other municipality in the county. That would help go a long way toward people to understand what's going on.
I asked for that at a Pell meeting, we had him study that, and the issue seems to be very difficult outside of a reassessment. Reassessment is the perfect opportunity to do that, but again, that was the answer I was given.
It's an algorithm. You can get the same amount from the total as you can from the sum of two.
It's very complicated the way that it's structured, but we'll talk about that again.
Hi. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and to the young lady, yeah, she's still here. I came to Scranton when I was nine months old, and I was educated here. And the gentleman that said about Lackawanna College, well, it was Lackawanna business when I went there, and I went on to Arcadia, down at Douglinside in Pennsylvania to finish up. So, to whatever reason, he doesn't like Lackawanna College now, you know? I think I did okay, you know, coming out of there. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here to say thank you. To thank you for the street signs, you know, that they are up, and it looks really good. And the first one that I noticed was at Wheeler and Ash Street. So I don't know who did what, but they are up. And I just wanted to say thank you, and if I could, give you a little thank you. I don't know who is, who, you know, because he does all kinds of things, so I just wanted to say thank you to whoever.
It's too bad the television station left already.
You're welcome. You know, who could do all those things?
That's going to collector's item.
So just in case.
This is going to go right on the refrigerator when I get home. Right on.
No, refrigerator.
Refrigerator. Trust me, there's not much on the refrigerator nowadays, so this is going to be.
This is our first personal thank you in a long time, so.
Thumbs up. And it just says, "To City Council, from a very satisfied Scranton resident, a big thank you for helping with my project." Yay, the street signs are up. Okay, that's all.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dave, do you have something good for us like this, or?
Yeah, you have to bring gifts now.
We want to end on a high note, we want to end on a high note.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxes paid, fees paid. All right, to start out tonight, Xfinity Television is, with Comcast is in our town, and we tried to see if anybody else was interested, but something has to be done. It's a ripoff. First of all, they should start paying their royalties in 30 pieces of silver to the city in lots. I had complaints for a month and a half, called them several times. Stations kept going out, pixelations all over the place, and they told me they were going to give me a break on my cable TV bill. Well, they gave me a break, they gave themselves a break, it's $20 more. It went from 195 to 215. Yeah, so, thank you Comcast. In France, by the way, it's about 50 bucks a month, because it's regulated like it should be. On reassessment, I know our city needs it, but the only question I have, we couldn't trust the last guys that did it, we couldn't trust the last guys to get it done, and can the current conductors be trusted, from what I can see of the county commissioners? I'm not really, I don't know about that. And Lackawanna keeps coming up. And one of the things, I know a lot of people say a lot of hurtful things, but the comment that was passed a few years back was that if they gave a Pell or a pilot, it would be money down the rat hole. And I found that hurtful. They deserve a little thanks for bringing in Henry Amoroso, chipping in. And Pell and the Chamber of Commerce are also complicit, because personally, I think it was a snow job. Pilots in themselves, you can ask, but you cannot demand. And if somebody wants to be appalled, like happened to two former council members, well, then it gets to be a hoopole in the paper. And, once again, on trash removal, we better be careful. Some people won't be paying to throw, they'll just throw and dump it off on their neighbors' properties and public property. So I prefer that we go after them for the fee, and certainly, it could be lower, but that's the way it is. In reality, living out in the country most of my life, I paid way more than $300 a year, and that was years ago. Once again, on Act 76, I keep seeing it in the paper, what began as an effort by Kentucky to help a single company, to help Appalachia, in Appalachia, to help raise capital by keeping state income taxes, withheld from workers' paychecks, had grown to more than 2,700 companies in 19 states when this book was published. The big banks, carmakers, insurers, a host of Canadian, Chinese, European, Japanese companies, all get the profit by pocketing the taxes withheld from their American workers' paycheck. Since the fine print came out in hardback, two more states have joined the trend, Oregon and Pennsylvania. So, you know, we have all kinds of trouble in Harrisburg here, and you read about how they have budget impasses and everything. They don't have a budget, because they gave the store away. And piling more taxes on top of taxes is not the answer. If you're going to give the store away, then that's just too bad. But people don't have them at 15% by the time a minimum wage worker walks out of his job. It doesn't need to go up to 17, and 18, and 20. Shame on Harrisburg. And once again, have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. I had a question last week, the capital budget, I think, Mrs. Schumacher, you asked the threshold for the amounts of the spending on it. Well, you know, not to anybody's surprise, we haven't had a capital budget in the city of Scranton quite some time, it's just something we haven't had money to do. But there is no set amount. Capital budget items get decided on, put on legislation, and then approved. So there's not a $500, $1,000 type tier. It's just something that gets put on, and then, once it's on the capital budget, that money needs to be dedicated for that use. Firehouses, I believe that was brought up. It's very apropos that you brought up those firehouses tonight, Mr. Elman. I have in my hand here the contract that was just signed not too long ago, and the next step is to get the schedule of, the schedule of work to be done by the company. They're going to, obviously, the roofs are of the utmost importance, and we're going to not only get the schedule of time done, but firehouses in an order, on a prioritized one, on that. So, once I get that schedule, I'll be sure to pass it on everybody, so we're aware of where that was. Because if you remember, we left off in July with emergency legislation to get this done before the weather ends. So it's very important to me to make sure that this, this job gets completed before the weather. I do have a request from a director from downtown Scranton for some handicap spot in front of their business. I received the email, I'll read a small portion of it. I'm writing on behalf of Integrative Counseling Services, PC. They're right there on the corner of Mulberry Street and Penn. If you're heading towards the new school, they're on the right where that ESSA Bank Plaza is. And they have several, several clients that are coming that are handicapped, and there's really no handicap parking dedicated. So, Mr. Wexler, I think you can help me with this. I know that's, that's metered down that section, so I don't know if that would really fall into the ABAs.
Yeah, it kind of falls on the umbrella that Mr. Evans and I discussed with them the other day, so we'll be in contact.
So a request would need to go out to them to.
Initially, yeah.
To consider making one of those spots dedicated for a handicap spot. Okay. All right, so we'll take care of that, and we'll get that in the works for them. We had a, we had a meeting with Mr. Don Rinaldi tonight, who is in charge of the Lace Works project. If you remember, this project's been in the works for many years now, it's a massive, huge project, and lately, it was in the news for, you know, attempted arson on that site. So that, that brought, you know, some eyebrows raised on this board. Mr. Rinaldi was nice enough to come in, answer some questions, not only on what his intentions are, safety for that location, but also where he is with the project and where it's going to go from here. So just to give you an update, this, the hazmat cleanup on this property, to get rid of all the hazardous chemicals that were either on the building, in the ground, to get removed, and then to get the stamp of approval to actually start new construction, has been about a year in the process. He expects it about two weeks to have all that wrapped up. From then, his next order of priority would be prioritizing demolitions of unsafe buildings and structures in that area. Some of those buildings just will not be able to be saved, unfortunately, which I think everybody knew that going in. So all the unsafe buildings will be destroyed, taken down, and removed from the property. Unfortunately, none of that could have been done until the hazmat issues were cleaned up there. Once he gets that done, he's going to go into preservation, preservation of all the existing structures there, just to keep the natural charm of the old Lace Building, just so we don't lose a piece of what we were. We can actually enjoy, you know, that once prominent building in our city. After that, then he's going to do his new construction, constructing around it and building, you know, adding to it. He doesn't like put timelines on a thing, but he's probably a year and a half, two years out. But again, he said, "Don't quote me on it, because as soon as I say something, something else comes up," which, you know, in a project that big, I understand. More importantly, getting to the safety issue. Councilman McGowan and myself, we brought up a couple, a couple suggestions to him. I believe Councilman McGowan, I'm sure he'll talk about this, brought up onsite, 24/7 onsite surveillance. I brought up the, maybe bring initiative of bringing some portable lighting there. He already has fence up. But a property that big, you know, it's very difficult to keep people out, but, you know, he's, unfortunately, that's his property, and he needs to do his due diligence, and I do believe his heart's in the right spot. And once he gets that location to an active work site, there'll be a 24/7 person there anyway. Living in the trailer, there'll be somebody onsite at all times. And once the active work site stops, I don't really see loitering as being as big of an issue as it is now, but until then, you know, we did really ask him to consider taking some steps, whether it be someone have their demand, or portable lights, or something just to deter this. You know, it's a nice neighborhood, and what he's doing there is admirable, we just don't want to see any other further disturbances. There's a bunch of other things on the agenda, and you know what, I'm just going to hit those as we go tonight, and that way, I don't have to keep you guys here any longer than you have to. So, that's everything, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Elman?
Yes, a couple items that I wanted to touch on, some of them are agenda items, I'll take the opposite approach, I'll speak on them now and hold the comments when it's, when it's time for the vote. Regarding the property on Wyoming Avenue, this is on for introduction this week, and I am a little bit conflicted regarding. I am a little bit conflicted regarding how I'm going to vote on that, on that item. I do understand, from having our caucus tonight, that there is litigation that is going to be, that could potentially cost the city much more money than obtaining the property for the green space, but at the same time, I do hate to see a piece of prime residential real estate being used for, for a park. I'm sure the park will be beautiful, but I'd much rather see a business there paying taxes and creating jobs. So, that's something over the course of the next few weeks, as this goes on, I'm going to continue to listen to residents and the business community as well to see what their thoughts on the best use of that property are. Next, the, I'm glad that Mr. Perry mentioned the firehouses. Again, I've become a little frustrated at the timeline with the repairs on these, on these firehouses, as other people have as well, but I appreciate Mr. Bolzoni giving the update. Also, Mr. Bolzoni was in today, spoke regarding questions I had on the lease of equipment that raises the interest rate from about 3% to 3.4, and there is additional cost. Mr. Bolzoni's explanation was that by spreading it out over a longer payment of time, even though it would cost the city more money in the long term, would stabilize the budget short term. I don't agree with him, but I do appreciate him coming in and giving the explanation on, on where he stands. Personally, I still, I hate debt. I say that all the time, and I certainly hate refinancing debt from a lower interest rate to a higher interest rate. So, because of that, I can't support that legislation. The Lace Works project was brought up, and Mr. Perry hit on a lot of points, but one thing I mentioned in the caucus that I do want to mention out here for the public is I know there's a lot of frustration, particularly by the residents in Lower Green Ridge, about how slow the Lace Works project has been to materialize. You know, Mr. Rinaldi assured us that the environmental cleanup part is almost complete, which is a really big part of the project. There was lead, asbestos, tons of hazardous materials in that property that needed to be cleaned out before any real construction began. And I just want to remind people that unfortunately, these type of projects do take time, much longer than we would all like. And the North Scranton Junior High Project is one that, for decades, people thought was never going to happen. And now, if you drive up Green Ridge Street, when you get to Main Avenue at the top, you see a beautifully redone building, which many people are living in. And I hope that in a year or two, we'll be able to say the same thing about the Scranton Lace Works, and I have confidence in the developer and their team, and I appreciate him keeping, keeping us in the loop on what's going on. Finally, and this is something that has been a pet peeve of mine, it's been brought up to me by a number of residents, is city employees smoking in front of City Hall. We have sent correspondence to the mayor regarding employees smoking in the front of City Hall, and just today, another resident mentioned to me that city employees are constantly smoking in the front of City Hall. So, if we could send another letter to the mayor requesting that anyone, any city employees that smoke on their break go in the back of the building. It's unprofessional, and it's not the impression that we want residents to have as they're coming into City Hall to do business, to get permits, to do this or to that, do that. So, if we could send that request to the mayor again, and that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome back Ms. Glynnis Johns to our arena. To put it to some more context of what Glynnis said, over the summer, Glynnis and I took a tour of downtown Scranton. I asked her to meet me downtown, and she talked about that at length, at the last time she was here. And at the time, I was sort of working on an idea I had to create walkable tours of the downtown with different subjects. For example, history, architecture, just being walkable in general, maybe a connection between the downtown and LHAV Trail. And then Glynnis was talking about and showing me a lot of locations where there was some significant black history in the downtown, and I thought it was very, very interesting. So, I asked her to develop that a little bit more and possibly be part of this tour idea that we had. So, I, hopefully, we will continue to work on that, and you'll be part of it. I anticipate at least five of these during next year, during the summer, from maybe May to September, once a month. So, there'll be more on that as, as we go along, but I appreciate her being back, and it was a very productive walk, and I learned a lot of things. I hope you learned a few things as well. So, we'll, we'll get back to that as we move on into the, the spring. The empty lot on Linden and Wyoming, first of all, at this point, I think the purchase of this lot appears to be a reasonable outcome of a lawsuit filed by the current property owners. Lackawanna County has, as you heard tonight, committed through a brownfield grant to remediate the environmental issues related to the property. Remediation relative to the future project that would be green space would be far less costly and intrusive than if the property was developed for some type of building. Sometimes, green space becomes the only viable alternative. While I disagree with the county's position on reassessment and some other important issues, I will expand on that in a minute, I would like to say that when it comes to projects like this and the land bank, and working with individuals like George Kelly and Andy Wallace, the county has been at times a very, very good partner. But back to the empty lot, the other reality is that there were no developers beating the door down to develop this contaminated parcel of land in downtown. This parcel has been vacant since 2008, after it was purchased, and for the record, it has been on the market almost continuously since 2009. It was purchased for $595,000, so the $375,000 amount really is pretty close to value in my mind, especially since the city, if they lost the lawsuit, that figure could double without the land even being part of the deal. Furthermore, Scranton tomorrow is applied for additional grant money of approximately $500,000 to develop that parcel for a pocket park, which would be the first of its kind in downtown Scranton. As Councilman Rogan mentioned, my first choice would always be a tax-paying entity that would build a building, that would be home to another mixed-use development, bringing small businesses and jobs and residents, along with additional tax dollars. I just don't see that as viable, given the history of that site. The city in many ways continues to lack the initiative to be business-friendly, and the county continues to punt on reassessment. So, the dynamics for attracting new construction certainly are not in place. I'm sure we'll have more discussions on this as we move into the agenda items, but that's all I have for that issue at this time. I will also like to mention, as was mentioned by members of the public, the county announced its schedule for two days of informational sessions on the reassessment, or what could be called, based on the ballot question, the Let Us Borrow $13 Million to Raise Your Taxes Tour. While I appreciate the effort, it really is too little, too late. When the ballot question was developed as stated, it killed, in my mind, any chance for reassessment being passed by the voters. I also find it interesting that the attorney that will be doing the question and answer session, to my knowledge, is the same attorney that helped the county craft the ballot question. In case anybody could have missed it at all, since I have said it maybe hundreds and hundreds of times, for the record again, I support reassessment, because tax equity is always the right thing to strive for, and it remains in my mind, the responsibility of the commissioners to make sure that happens, not the voters. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahan?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to start off with some citizens' requests that I received this week. I was contacted by several members of the Hill Section about the roads in that area of Scranton, and particularly, the rough shape that they were in after utility company work. So, the residents are extremely frustrated, and they wanted to know if paving would be done this year. So, we did speak with DPW Director Gallagher, and he reported the following. He spoke with officials at the gas company, who advised him that the Public Relations Department of the utility company will be placing a schedule in the newspaper to notify the residents of the area as to their schedule for the Hill Section. They are planning on restoring the trenches and cuts for the winter, however, they did state that it will be weather permitting. The director also spoke with Penzi Paving, and they told him that they were scheduled to be in the Hill Section possibly at the end of the week. So, that's an update for residents of the Hill. We also got several complaints about paved cuts and utility work in the area of Sanderson Avenue. We also spoke with the DPW Director. Utility work by the gas company was just completed on Sanderson Avenue. Cuts were filled with hot patch, and they were not permanent. Now, the water company is coming in to do the main and then new service cuts. The water should be working on the same, water company should be working on the same cuts that the gas company made. Again, they're not certain if the road will be fully restored prior to winter weather, but it will be restored by the utilities at some point. Disappointing that they're not sure if it's going to get done prior to winter weather, because we had this experience last winter in Manuka, and the residents were forced to drive on a road that was not only dangerous because of winter conditions, but because the utility company didn't restore properly at that point. So, hopefully, that can be taken care of. We received several complaints about Stores Court, which is behind the V-Spot Bar, and it needs to be patched. So, we sent that into the DPW. Residents are damaging their vehicles when they're trying to get to their homes and their garages. Also, I've received several calls over the last week and a half from residents in Kaiser Valley about the PP&amp;L work and them cutting down the forest on West Mountain. So, I'd like to send correspondence or get in touch with PP&amp;L and find out if they have to replant the trees that they took down in order to build the substation up there. Several residents are curious about that. I brought up the last few weeks about the Civil War Museum in the basement of City Hall. So, at this point, I would like to make a motion that Scranton City Council send a letter to Mayor Courtright expressing its support for the GAR Civil War Museum's continued operation in the basement of City Hall, and urging the mayor to renew the GAR's lease, which expires November 28, 2017, immediately.
I'll second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I make that motion for two reasons. Number one, there was a story that was done on WNEP where they interviewed Mayor Courtright, and he said that he would be in favor of the GAR Museum staying as long as they want it. I've spoken to these people that run this museum for several months now, and they continue to be concerned about the operation of the museum and whether or not they are going to be kicked out. They were relieved that Mayor Courtright agreed to let them stay as long as they want. However, I have the lease here from 2007. It was a 10-year lease. It does expire this November, and I would like this council to support the museum in its current operation in the basement, and urge the mayor to renew that lease before it expires, so that at least the people that put so much effort and so much time into what they do down there, for the benefit of all residents in the city of Scranton, can at least have the satisfaction of knowing that they have a signed document that says they're going to be able to continue to operate down there. Thank you.
Yeah, on, on that question, I have spoken to Mayor Courtright about this several times. He has made a commitment to, to keep the museum there as long as possible. My only concern with asking for the lease to be renewed is what would be the term. We have heard from the director of facilities here that the space may be needed for storage, which is a responsibility of the city. We've seen in the past where records have not been stored properly, and they have been damaged by weather or maintenance failures. So, I'm not, I do support the museum. I do support them staying here until we have another place for them to go, or until the space is needed by the city, as our responsibility, but I'm just concerned with asking for a letter for the lease to be open-ended. I am concerned about that.
And just to respond to that, I, I understand there may be storage issues, but, and I'll reiterate my point that I've made over the last few weeks, I'm sure there's someplace else we can store documents in either City Hall or someplace else, but there is no way that we can say, that anybody else can say, as far as I'm concerned, that they have a museum with the kind of artifacts that we have, the kind of dedication, the kind of hard work that was put in, in that basement by the members of this museum anyplace else in the state of Pennsylvania. So, I think instead of worrying about storage and documents, we should be worrying about promoting the museum and keeping it there, and I think the only way we can do that is to make sure that they have a signed lease, and all of the terms of the lease are within this document. I don't think much has to change. The mayor would have to decide how many years. I would prefer a 10-year lease as what was done in 2007, because I think it's important, but that, again, would be up to the mayor.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the comments about the, the museum and how successfully successful they are, and how great of a place it is, but if we decide to keep them here and we have to go off-site to store records, there is going to be a cost to the city. We've had discussions here about saving $10,000, $20,000. I don't know the cost of storage space, and I do support the museum. I just want to make sure that we don't tie the city up into a 10-year lease with the museum, and then find out that we have to spend $50,000 a year to store records someplace.
On the, on the storage issue, I think the solution, at least practically, looking practically, is the Serenti Building, which I thought was a good, good acquisition for the city, and, you know, there's plenty of room in that facility. You know, I, anytime there's an organization or any type of event that honors veterans, such as this museum, I think we have to try to do everything we can to accommodate them. So, I agree with the motion, and I think as far as the storage goes, the city can, can find, find space at the Serenti Building.
Can you reread your motion again?
Sure. The motion was that Scranton City Council send a letter to the mayor expressing its support for the GAR Civil War Museum's continued operation in the basement of City Hall, and urging the mayor to renew the GAR's lease, which expires November 28, 2017, immediately.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't really leave it open-ended. We support the museum. I would like them to stay here. That's, administration would have to decide if, what's more important to them, the museum or storage.
Here's my one question, though, and I, this is what annoys me, to be honest with everybody up here. I've been asking the mayor for an answer on this for weeks, and he cannot give a definite answer. What records? Are they from the law department? Are they from the business administrator's office? So, what's the plan? And, by the way, when I speak to the people that run the museum, and this was on the report Monday, nobody can get in touch with the mayor. So, you know, he's talking to some people, he's not talking to other people. It's a problem. Either you want them there, give them a lease, or do something else, but just do something. I'm just sick of the, the back and forth.
Well, back and forth is part of the process. We have to go back and forth to make sure that, you know, we do what's right for the museum and for the city. That's, that's part of the back and forth. Mr. Courtright has received requests for this space from the building manager and from the city solicitor, and that's part of the back and forth. So, I, I agree with the motion. I'd like to get it settled. We want to keep the museum here because it is a valuable asset to the city, and I think that's just something that has to be resolved.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it. I mean, the bottom line is, we all agree that we support the museum. Now, it's a matter of hashing out the terms that are mutually satisfactory to both parties. That should have been done well ahead of the.
Yeah, before the November lease date.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm fine with it.
All those of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so move.
Thank you. Just a few more items. I'm still waiting for a response from the mayor on another item, which is the termination and dissolution of the Scranton Sewer Authority, so I would like to send another letter to the mayor, hopeful for a response. We have no written update yet from the Attorney General on our request for the Attorney General's office to review the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. I also would like to send another letter, and again, hope that the mayor responds to this one. It's in, about the Ethics Board that's in the city. I had sent a letter to the mayor weeks ago on this, about whether or not he was going to appoint people to the Ethics Board. There are people that are currently on this board, but the appointments have lapsed. So, I would like to know from our solicitor if we could have this answer next week. Does council get to appoint people to a board if a certain period of time elapses and no appointments are made by the mayor? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. One comment. You could see that the Attorney General was busy today. He was very busy in the city today. So, we have sent a request into them to further take a look at our request, and we are still waiting for an answer on that. In regards to the point, Mr. Gahan, that you brought up about the West Mountain Project, I think the best person to talk to would be Mr. King, because we have spoken to him in the past regarding the PP&amp;L's NPE desk permit and earth disturbance permits. So, I know Mr. King is up to speed on that before we proceed with PP&amp;L, because, as I said, Mr. King may have. said, Mr. King may have, may already have the answers. A general comment about the capital budget, even though it's been tabled, I think as described tonight by Business Administrator Bolzoni, in the past, the capital budget was more of a wish, a wish list, something that garnered a lot of press in the paper for one day, a lot of pioneer sky projects that were never going to be full, never be fulfilled. Actually, this capital budget will be a funded budget for the money to be dispersed and used. So it is a true, a true capital budget. In regards to the purchase of the property on Wyoming Avenue, the county already is in possession of a brownfield grant from the state. I believe the county has been allotted $500,000 to do remediation throughout the county because there's several, there's several brownfield sites within, within the county. And it is a project that we, as we talked about tonight, it'll combine the activity of the city, the county, and Scranton tomorrow in improving that process. In terms of the green space being used for, for a building again, Mr. Evans brought his expertise to this. He has been active in that project and explained, you know, the situation with that. One of the things that we have been, we have been hearing to make the downtown more attractive for residential, green space is one of the items that comes up constantly. We also hear requests for grocery stores and more, more varied entertainment within the city. So this is one of the, one of our steps that we can take to help develop the downtown and I think it's a good idea to use for that, for that property. When that property is, when that property is sold, I do believe, one of the things that we discussed tonight, if there are any back taxes owed to the county, to the city or to the school board, those taxes will be, be paid by the seller. So any back taxes will be recuperated on that property. In regards to the Lace Works, we have, that development has received some, some grants and it has received a tax abatement from the city and the county and the school board. But for the most part, and I think this is very important, that, that project represents mostly private investment, which is rare anymore. The group that's taken over that project is committed for success. They are putting their own money on the table, which to me shows a true commitment when someone puts their own money on, on the table. And one, one more comment in terms of the leases on the DPW equipment. In private industry, the lowest price or the cheapest price isn't always the best deal. In this situation, I feel that the, the city has taken a look at what is the best value for the city in terms of refinancing the lease, being able to add more equipment and to stabilize the, the drain on the budget. So even though if we, if we do pennies and nickels, it comes out to be a little more expensive for the city, but in terms of being the best value for the city, I think they have made the wise choice here. All right. That's it.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for an executed grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY-17 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, local solicitation in the amount of $19,133.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, just on the question. I did some research on this. This is a really neat piece of equipment that we're looking to acquire. This is something that, it's a pod that stands up and it just scans a crime scene, an accident scene, and it does it in split second to measurements of a millimeter. It saves so much time if you, you know, you have an accident on the highway, a lot of times they have to be, you know, it takes, they have to collect evidence. There could be evidence tampering. This just takes care of everything just like that. And to have potential grant money available to take care of this with county help, you know, that's, that's, that's a pretty good tool in the, in the city's toolbox to have.
Yes, on the question. I agree with Councilman Perry and I just want to say that the police department and Chief Graziano need to be commended for being consistently, as far as I'm concerned, in the, in the last four years, ahead of the curve in terms of technology and efficiency. And I think this legislation just goes to prove that. Thank you.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute the deed conveying title from RSM Properties LLC, the property located at 248-256 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to the city of Scranton as more fully described in Exhibit A attached here too and made a part hereof.
At this, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'll be voting to move this to sixth order. However, I do have several, not questions, but I'd like to review some documents that were discussed in the caucus. I would like to see a copy of the settlement agreement between the city and RMS, who currently owns the property. Attorney Boils agreed to give us a copy of that already. Number two, I would like a copy of the grant application in the amount of $500,000 in order to rehab this property into a green space. I'd also like to see if we can get confirmation, if there isn't already, from DEP that the city can actually use this property as green space. According to Mr. Bolzoni, there were several conversations, but I just want confirmation on that. And finally, I would like to see a copy of the grant application that the county has for remediating brownfields. I'd like an estimate on the cost that it's going to take to remediate this piece of property in order for the city to be able to make it green space. Thank you.
Yeah. On the question, was, just one comment that I had. We did have a hearing to this prior to, not on this particular, this issue, but I found it interesting that for as much criticism as council gets and as much criticism that the city gets in general, the argument for not buying this property is that it's too valuable. The fact that the city has seen a development in residential development and business, the argument against this sale is that it's too valuable because it may be used for others, for other interests. I find that very interesting for the fact that a few years ago, there was no interest in downtown Scranton at all. And through several different developments, Mr. Jefferson's made some investments, Mr. Russo's made some investments, the medical college has come to town. We really have turned the downtown around in terms of a place to live and do business. We wish there was more shopping, but there isn't. But over the past 15 years or so, the downtown has changed. It's something where now we're talking about value and I think that's outstanding.
Just to reiterate on this item, I'm very open-minded on it. I initially, like I said, my gut reaction was that it's probably not the best use of the land. Councilman Evans had a lot of experience with this and the items that he mentioned, we've discussed it at length, certainly weigh a lot on my decision, but I do want to talk to some downtown developers to see what their opinions are, neighboring businesses, before making a final decision.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for an executed grant application by the city of Scranton and if successful, accept the funds related thereto through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a local share account grant, gaming funds Monroe County, in the amount of $75,000 to be used to develop a Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction Plan.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Just a little clarification on what this grant application is going to do. This grant will come from DCED. The total cost of the plan is $100,000. So the city's committed to $25,000 towards this project. The total project consists of $50,000 for the actual creation of the Chesapeake Pollution Reduction Plan and then $50,000 in the second half of it for mapping the MS4 system, which will be a combination of plan reviews, field work, and GIS digitizing. The cost of the plan is based on a scope of work that was provided by a representative from Arcadis who is doing the stormwater study. The city is required by their MS4 permit, the municipal separate stormwater system, sewer system issued by DEP to prepare this plan, the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction Plan. This funding's going to be used to prepare that plan. It's going to include public participation, mapping, identification of pollutants, determining the baseline pollutant loading, determining the amount of pollutants that must be removed, identifying the funding mechanisms, and identifying the responsible parties for the operation and maintenance of best management practices. Thank you.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5F for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with CC Cleaning Services for janitorial services for Scranton City Hall and the Scranton Police Headquarters for a one-year period.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. I'm going to be voting to move this along, but I do have a few questions. So this legislation, the city's going to enter into a, a contract with a cleaning company for cleaning services, janitorial services in City Hall and in the Scranton Police Department Headquarters. So this company was the lowest bidder at $33,540. It's for a one-year period. The services are going to be performed by the company Tuesday, two days a week. My first question is, what is the reasoning for having this cleaning company? And I ask that question because according to our budget, we have one maintenance man in City Hall and we have two janitors according, again, to the budget. So what is the reasoning for hiring the cleaning company? And if they are hired, what will the, for example, the Scranton Headquarters, Scranton Police Headquarters, what will that person be responsible for during that two-day period when this cleaning company will be there? I don't know all the details, so maybe I'm missing something, but on the surface, this seems like a waste of money. We have a staff that's employed full-time that should take care of these duties, so again, I'm not sure why we're paying a cleaning company, but I would like to find that out before we pass this. Thank you.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 117, 2017, an ordinance creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled Lindy Creek Flood Project 2017 for the receipt and disbursement of matching grant funds from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for rehabilitation assistance for the Lindy Creek Flood Project.
You referred reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I moved that Item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, file of the council number 113, 2017, amending file of the council number 65, 2016, an ordinance entitled General City Operating Budget 2017 by transferring $464,861.26 from account number as noted miscellaneous revenue other not classified to account number as noted Department of Public Safety Bureau of Fire Capital Expenditures by increasing funding in the above revenue and corresponding expense accounts to utilize additional revenue received from DCED, LSA grants for aerial fire truck and PPL commercial rebate program, Act 129 funds.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on finance?
As chairperson for the committee on finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wechsler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, file of the council number 114, 2017, amending file of the council number 107, 2017, an ordinance entitled Approving the Transfer of a Restaurant Liquor License Currently Owned by Joan Hudak Trading Doing Business as Seven Sisters Tavern, 814 Susquehanna Avenue, Oliphant, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, license number R-3527 to CFM Beer Brick LLC for use at 337 West Market Street, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to correct a typographical error in the liquor license number in the second whereas clause and the now therefore clause to read liquor license number R-3527.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wechsler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, file of the council number 115, 2017, amending file of the council number 60, 2016, an ordinance entitled granting local economic revitalization tax assistance to a property located at Albright and Glenn Avenues and identified as pin numbers as noted owned by Lace Building Affiliates LP and setting forth amounts of tax abatements for each year for 10 years for the sole purpose to correct the file of the council number in the second whereas clause to file of the council number 37.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on finance?
As chairperson for the committee on finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wechsler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the committee on public works for adoption, resolution number 184, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Riley Associates Consulting Engineers for engineering services temporary culvert improvements for Meadow Brook Creek Stormwater Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on public works?
As chairperson for the committee on public works, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wechsler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the committee on public works for adoption, resolution number 185, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a government obligation contract between Kansas State Bank of Manhattan and the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of one 2018 Mack GU-813 with 25-yard packer, one 2018 Mack GU-812 with a 20-yard packer, four Freightliner 108 SD trucks with snow plow equipment, and refinancing of contract number as noted for the four 2015 GU-813 refuse packers for the Department of Public Works.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on public works?
As chairperson for the committee on public works, I recommend a final vote of Item 7E.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. We talked a little bit about this already tonight and I'm glad Mr. Bolzoni came into caucus today and, and answered some of our questions on this. Initially, when I saw the, the interest rate increase on a refinance, you know, that didn't, that didn't really sit well with me. I didn't, to be honest, I didn't understand why we would be doing something like that. As, as it was, we got into it and we got, you know, the explanation, if, first of all, it's needed equipment. We need to get that to DPW, not only so they're safe, but so they can adequately do their job for the rest of us and provide the service. That being said, if we wait and we don't renegotiate this lease and extend it out and we start a new lease or wait, the interest rates, if anybody's noticed what's going on nationally with the feds, they're, they're moving their rates up. So eventually that's going to trickle down to, to lease rates and, and regular consumer rates. So we could be looking something of, north of 4% if we did go out and wait and hesitate on this. So, you know, he does feel that it is, it's still a reasonable rate, under 4%. If we were to were to wait, it would be over 4% next time, and it would cost us more in the long run. So, for that reasoning and rationale, I'll be voting yes for this.
Yes, on the question. I think this is money well spent. The bottom line is, we need the equipment. We're either going to buy it today, or we're going to buy it at some point in the future, or we're going to spend money on fixing up the equipment. So, this makes sense. I think it nearly completes the equipment overhaul in the D P W, and I'm particularly pleased that we're purchasing some additional snow plow equipment, because we do need that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, the important thing in this, as Mr. Goohan just mentioned, is the four snowplows. One thing that we said we were going to do after the blizzard happened, we were going to make sure that we had, wherever we can, to put proper equipment in place to get to some of the harder areas, particularly some of the alleys, East Mountain, some of the dead ends. That didn't get plowed till later on during the snowstorm. So, I think this is a good step to make sure that we are more prepared for snow. I would love for it to stay just like it is and never snow again, but we know that's not true. So, I think this is a good plan.
Just to be clear, I support the acquisition of the new equipment as well. It is sorely needed, but I don't agree with lumping in a refinance of older equipment into this package. I don't think it makes sense. I think we should, the city should have just did the purchase as a whole. I don't like the idea of refinancing older equipment that the city is responsible for maintaining. But I do appreciate the business administrator coming in and giving his explanation. Even though I do disagree with him on this case, I appreciate him coming in.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the committee on public safety for adoption, resolution number 186, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a government obligation contract between Municipal Leasing Consultants LLC and the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the acquisition of a new 2017 Suthen SP 100 aerial platform truck for the city of Scranton Fire Department.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on public safety?
As chair for the committee on public safety, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the committee on public safety for adoption, resolution number 187, 2017, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a local share account grant, gaming funds Monroe County, in the amount of $83,907 for the purchase of 75 tasers for the Scranton Police Department Patrol Division.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on public safety?
As chair for the committee on public safety, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the committee on public safety for adoption, resolution number 188, 2017, accepting a $1,000 donation from Mr. and Mrs. James Stewart, presented to the city of Scranton Police Department for the K-9 unit.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on public safety?
As chairperson for the committee on public safety, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second. On the question?
Yes, just quickly on the question. I just want to personally thank Mr. and Mrs. Stewart for their ongoing generosity to the K-9 unit. The K-9 unit is a valuable part of our city and our police department, and their generosity definitely doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I for consideration by the committee on community development for adoption, resolution number 189, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for an executed grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $1 million, accepting and dispersing the grant, and coordinate the use of the grant funds with Scranton Cherry LP for the project to be named the Scranton Counseling Center.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on community development?
As chair for the committee on community development, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn? Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted. Before we adjourn, we just want to thank Mrs. Jeffries. We don't usually get thank you notes or congratulations, so this will have a special place in council history.
Thank you.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned.